Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to those here in attendance and online to the April 17th, 2025 meeting this Thursday evening of the Johnson City City Commission held at the Water and Sewer Services Complex. It is currently 6:00 PM and we will call the meeting to order. Jim Hazelsteiner with St. Mary's will come and lead us in prayer. If everyone will please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you and praise you for your goodness and your mercy that you have bestowed upon us. We trust you for faithfully preserving us through the good times as well as the bad, confident that you will make all things new. Thank you for this day and the potential it holds. We come together this evening seeking your blessings and guidance. We ask you to provide our city leaders with the wisdom to lead and unify our community. And as we approach this glorious celebration, the resurrection of our Savior Jesus Christ, may we always be filled with your spirit and love. We pray all these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Willis.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on your agenda for this evening is item 3.1, to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled city commission meeting held on Thursday, April 3rd, 2025.
Are there any additions, corrections, or a motion? Move for approval?
I'll second.
Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hunter.
Yes.
Mr. Willis.
Mayor, we have no requests for public comment this evening, so we'll move straight into the next item, which is item 5.1, a recognition for Pat Walding for our 25th year of Tree City USA. Happy to have Jason. (audio cuts out)
We will call the meeting back to order after recess. Mr. Willis.
So we were consenting. Yes, sir.
So Commissioner Fowler.
6.1.3, please.
6.1.3. Anything else? That's it. Vice Mayor?
Not me.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes. Let's get that. 6.1.1.
Okay. Mr. Willis.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Both of those are.
Yours.
Are mine, yeah. So 6.1.1 involves one of our towers on Buffalo Mountain. The lease agreement is between the city and VB Nimbus LLC. That is the former Cumulus Media. VB Nimbus bought them out, I believe, in 2020. So this will renew that lease for a 10-year period with the option to extend for two additional five-year terms. It will result in about $52,000 in revenue annually for the city.
I just thought it'd be a good idea when people look up at Buffalo Mountain, they see all these antennas, you know, they're not all city antennas at all.
That's correct.
And so that's good to know who owns them and who uses them for our benefit.
And they have a variety of co-locates on that particular tower, about seven in total. So it's one of the, I think it's the second tallest tower on Buffalo.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then item 6.1.3 involves an issuance of bonds. And the reason it's before you this evening is the Tax Equity and Physical Responsibility Act, which went into effect in 1982, requires public approval of private activity bonds. So what this bond will do for the owner of this property, which is DGA Lakewood, it will allow them to refurbish approximately 100 units in the Lakewood Village apartment complex. And to give you some perspective from a geographical standpoint, these are located near Swadley and Plymouth Roads. So similar to what happened in the Tyler Apartments recently, that you may recall, this would be a similar project. But this also has already been through a public hearing that was advertised and no members of the public showed up to speak in support or in objection to these bonds. So I certainly believe this would be a great project for the refurbish of that complex.
That's mostly what I brought it up for. The $20 million bond is not our money that we're putting up, but it's money for them to refurbish these apartments and therefore low-income.
Yes.
Families.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments with regard to the consent or a motion? Move for approval?
Second.
Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hunter.
Yes. Mr. Willis.
Item, your next item is item 7.1, ordinance 4911-25. This is first reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 4662-18 entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt a Code of Laws and Ordinances for the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and amends thereof for permits, tapping fees, and fair user charge system of billing for the use of the Johnson City, Tennessee water system." And we have Director Tom Witherspoon here this evening to present this item.
Yep. Mr. Witherspoon, if you could dumb that down for us.
Mayor, I feel like I've talked a lot today, so it's good to be before you. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Willis, Ms. Laus. So this particular ordinance provides funding for our capital improvements plan, and we'll talk a little bit about how that's being delivered. Raftellus Financial Consultants came before the board in a work session in January of this year. They made recommendations to assist the city to determine the best funding method over, in this case, four years, to minimize the impact on our customers and other stakeholders, to deliver close to $54 million in debt-funded capital and about another $26 million in rate-funded capital. So we'll talk a little bit about what does that mean to the general public. They're critical projects. They are water, in this case, this is a water ordinance, but I'm going to speak to the next ordinance collectively with this one because it's hard to separate them. So the capital improvements in water sewer are for the protection of local lakes, streams, and public health. They're also for the reliability of providing service to our customers, not just when the weather's like it was today, which was outstanding, when the weather's maybe not so good and people still expect delivery of services during that period of time. And as we talked about previously, and every time we get a chance, water sewer, whether it's in Johnson City or Kingsport or any municipality, is probably one of the most heavily regulated departments that a local government or government deals with. We're regulated by the state EPA, OSHA, number of state and federal agencies, but especially TDEC as far as the operation of the water plants, the wastewater plants, and both of the water distribution system and the wastewater collection system. A little bit of history, the city commission approved four significant master plans in calendar year 2021. So here we are four years later for a recommendation. So when we talk about master plans for a utility system, they're really what, they're a roadmap. They help us to prioritize improvements, recommendations to the elected body, and our system has utilized master planning well over 60 years for planning on improvements to the water and the wastewater system. City Commission on these four participated in work sessions in the fall of 2024 from each of our consultants, and they dealt with improvements to one of our three wastewater treatment plants, the Nob Creek wastewater plant, smart metering, SCADA upgrading and replacement at all five of our facilities, two water, three wastewater, and more importantly or as importantly, a 30-year water distribution, treatment, and storage water master plan for the community. And that's not just Johnson City, but that's for roughly our 166 mile square mile service area. So in January of this year, the commission did hear from our rate consultant, Raftellus, how to best fund and prioritize the capitalists and again minimize the impact on customers. We have utilized this particular firm for over 20 years. During that period of time, we have delivered almost $200 million in capital improvements to the water and the wastewater system. A significant amount of that is to the wastewater plants and the wastewater collection system because of the age of the system. When we talk about funding, a lot of folks may not realize that if you have a utility system, the majority of that funding comes from the user rates. So since 1980, all water and sewer systems across the country, similar to Johnson City, when you have capital needs or operational needs, it is through local funding, through water and sewer bills. We, like many government entities, especially local government entities, are set up as an enterprise fund, and the law and the definition to that is that we don't get tax money for operations, use utility money, rate money, tap fee money to support your daily, weekly, monthly, yearly operations. The amount of the adjustments are proposed in this, and again, I'm going to talk broadly about the two ordinances, is anywhere from around $2 to $5 a month. We've got a variety of customer classes, that's around 3.75% to 5.75% that would start in July this year and continue for four years. And it all depends on the location of the customer and the types of usage that they have. In looking at what should be or what we believe would be acceptable to the community and working with our consultant, we looked at other rates that are in the area and also for other similar providers, similar-sized utilities. And we feel like that ours now are competitive, and through this process, they will remain competitive and low. And I would mention that those other providers, other systems, face the same challenges that we face. And so I suspect their rates over this window of time will have some increase in some form or fashion. When we talk about why we invest more in.
Six point one point one.
Okay. Mr. Willis?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Both of those are
Yours.
Are mine, yeah. So, six point one point one involves a, one of our towers on Buffalo Mountain. The lease agreement is between the city and VB Nimbus LLC. That is the former Cumulus Media. VB Nimbus bought them out, I believe, in 2020. So, this will renew that lease for a 10-year period with the option to extend for two additional five-year terms. It will result in about $52,000 in revenue annually for the city.
It'd certainly be a good idea when people look up at Buffalo Mountain, they see all these antennas, you know, they're not all city antennas at all.
That's correct.
And so, that's, that's good to know who, who owns them and who uses them for our benefit.
And they have a variety of co-locates on that particular tower, about seven in total. So, it's one of the, I think it's the second tallest tower on Buffalo.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then item six point one point three involves a issuance of bonds. And the reason it's before you this evening is the Tax Equity and Physical Responsibility Act, which went into effect in 1982, requires public approval of private activity bonds. So, what this bond will do for the owner of this property, which is DGA Lakewood, it will allow them to refurbish approximately 100 units in the Lakewood Village apartment complex. And to give you some perspective from a geographical standpoint, these are located near Swadley and Plymouth Roads. So, similar to what happened in the Tyler Apartments recently, that you may recall, this would be a similar project. But this also has already been through a public hearing that was advertised, and no members of the public showed up to speak in support or in objection to these bonds. So, I certainly believe this would be a great project for refurbish of that complex.
That's mostly what I brought it up for. The $20 million bond is not our money that we're putting up, but it's money for them to refurbish these apartments and therefore low-income
Yes.
families.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments with regard to the consent or motion, move for approval?
Second.
Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Item, your next item is item seven point one, ordinance 4911 dash 25. This is first reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 4662 dash 18 entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt a Code of Laws and Ordinances for the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith, and amendatory thereof for permits, tapping fees, and fair user charge system of billing for the use of the Johnson City, Tennessee water system." And we have Director Tom Witherspoon here this evening to present this item.
Yep. Mr. Witherspoon, if you could dumb that down for us.
Mayor, I feel like I've talked a lot today, so it's good to be before you, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Willis, Ms. Laus. So, this particular ordinance provides funding for our capital improvements plan. And we'll talk a little bit about how that's being delivered. Raftellus Financial Consultants came before the board in a work session in January of this year. They made recommendations to assist the city to determine the best funding method over, in this case, four years, to minimize the impact on our customers and other stakeholders, to deliver close to 54 million in debt-funded capital and about another 26 million in rate-funded capital. So, we'll talk a little bit about what does that mean to, to, to the general public. They're critical projects. They are water, in this case, this is the water ordinance, but I'm going to speak to the next ordinance collectively with this one because it's hard to separate them. So, the capital improvements in water sewer are for the protection of local lakes, streams, and public health. They're also for the reliability of providing service to our customers, not just when the weather's like it was today, which was outstanding, when the weather's maybe not so good, and people still expect delivery of services during that period of time. And as we talked about previously, and every time we get a chance, water sewer, whether it's in Johnson City or Kingsport or any municipality, is probably one of the most heavily regulated departments that a local government or government deals with. We're regulated by the state EPA, OSHA, number of state and federal agencies, but especially TDEC as far as the operation of the water plants, the wastewater plants, and both of the, the water distribution system and the wastewater collection system. Little bit of history, the city commission approved four significant master plans in the, in calendar year 2021. So, here we are four years later for, for a recommendation. So, when we talk about master plans for a utility system, they're really what, they're a roadmap. They help us to prioritize improvements, recommendations to the elected body. And our system has utilized master planning well over 60 years for planning on, on improvements to the water and the wastewater system. City Commission on these four participated in work sessions in the fall of 2024 from each of our consultants, and they dealt with improvements to one of our three wastewater treatment plants, the Nob Creek wastewater plant, smart metering, SCADA upgrading and replacement at all five of our facilities, two water, three wastewater. And more importantly, or as importantly, a 30-year water distribution, treatment, and storage water master plan for the community. And that's not just Johnson City, but that's for roughly our 166 mile, square mile service area. So, in January of this year, the commission did hear from our rate consultant Raftellus how to best fund and prioritize the capitalists and, again, minimize the impact on customers. We have utilized this particular firm for over 20 years. During that period of time, we have delivered almost 200 million in capital improvements to the water and the wastewater system. A significant amount of that is to the wastewater plants and the wastewater collection system because of the, the age of the system. When we talk about funding, a lot of folks may not realize that if you have a utility system, the majority of that funding comes from the user rates. So, since 1980, all water and sewer systems across the country, similar to Johnson City, when you have capital needs or operational needs, it is through local funding, through water and sewer bills. We, like many government entities, especially local government entities, are set up as an enterprise fund. And the, the law and the definition to that is that we don't get tax money for operations. Use utility money, rate money, tap fee money to support your daily, weekly, monthly, yearly operations. The amount of the adjustments are proposed in this, and again, I'm going to talk broadly about the two ordinances, is anywhere from around $2 to $5 a month. We've got a variety of customer classes that's around 3.75 to 5.75% that would start in July this year and continue for four years. And it all depends on the location of the customer and the, and the types of usage that they have. In looking at what should be or what we believe would be acceptable to the community and working with our consultant, we looked at other rates that are in the area and also for other similar providers, similar-sized utilities. And we feel like that ours now are competitive, and through this process, they will remain competitive and low. And I would mention that those other providers, other systems, face the same challenges that we face. And so, I suspect their rates over this window of time will have some increase in, in some form or fashion. When we talk about why we invest more into the system, we've got a variety of customer classes. Again, they expect reliability in our supply, and they expect a high level of regulatory compliance. A couple of items that might be of interest on regulatory compliance. Our wastewater plants and our water plants operate daily, you know, seven days a week, 365 days a year through all types of weather conditions, and they continue to have a very high compliance record. In other words, no violations or low violations, no violations is in our case. Might mention two events to where we continue to operate and provide service. Some folks may remember the Christmas Freeze Event of 2023. We had, because of the investment in the water treatment and the water distribution system, we had a number of main breaks. Companies that had fire sprinkler systems had a number of main breaks. We were able to overcome that demand and still provide adequate service to everybody. So, other than one small electrical issue out at a distant part of the system, we kept all of our customers in water during that event. More recently, Hurricane Helene. We did not stop treating nor delivering water to our customers during that event. A lot of that is due, again, to capital investment. There's a couple of pictures on the back wall. One is the raw water intake, and that intake was built in 2002. And while we weren't on the Nola Chucky, we did experience significant flooding from the Doe River as it impacted our water, our main water source, the Watauga River. And that intake is a very robust intake. Our treatment plant folks did an outstanding job, but that made it possible for us to continue to deliver and treat water. And then the last thing a lot of folks don't think much about, but especially as it pertains to the water system, I know our fire chief, Chief Bell, is here, but he will tell you that the water system does play a role because of storage and transmission and the number of hydrants that are in the system and the rating that the community has for their fire protection system. And in our case, it is a, it is a Class 1, and they or we are very proud of that. Previously, the capital, the way we have delivered capital projects, the customers have been supportive of that. They understand the benefit of that. Also, as part of this, it's been roughly 2012 since we've done any significant adjustments to the connection fees, the tap fees. We feel like based on a high-level inflation that we need to make some adjustments to that, to those during this process. And so, those are also in there. An example would be for a typical water tap inside the corporate limits. Year one, it would go up $140. The sewer tap would go up about $400. So, still very competitive. Staff and Raftellus did an excellent job of looking again at other folks that are in our area, what they were charging, what others of similar providers were charging, and to make sure we stayed within that circle. And I would mention that we've got about, I believe it's almost 26 different tap categories. So, what I quoted was just one of those. Specifically to the water system, and then I'll speak when we have the next order, Steve, to the wastewater system. I'm sorry. Yeah, water system first. There's eight debt-funded projects. In other words, we're borrowing money to deliver about $13 million of water improvement projects to the plants and the distribution system. And also increases to what we call rate or cash-funded capital. And those type of, that type of funding is what we lean on and utilize for reoccurring line replacement, tank recoding, other types of yearly improvements to the water system. So, as part of that 13 million, we will be building a new storage tank out towards Gray, transmission lines, two significant pumping upgrades, and upgrade of technology at our water plants. And so, those are in accordance with the recommendation that Raftellus provided to the Board of Commissioners in January of this year. And approval is recommended for this. Be happy to answer any questions.
Just for the public, you said we have about 160,000 accounts or customers?
Yeah. We've got roughly 48,000 water accounts, about 30,000 sewer accounts, but we're providing service not only in Johnson City, but in portions of four counties. And that service area is right at 166 square miles.
So, just off the top of your head, how, how many gallons of water in a 24-hour period do we have to process? To get out to our customers?
We generally produce about 13 million gallon, 12 to 13 million gallons per day out of our Watauga Source, which is our main source. And then the Unicoy Water Plant up in Unicoy County, we produce right at about 3 million gallons today. So, 15 to 16 million gallons per day. During the Freeze Event, we were pumping a whole lot more than that, so.
So, it's a big job.
It's a big system.
And we have miles and miles and miles of water, water lines to get out into these service areas that have to be cared for and replaced and upgraded, and that we have to stay up to date on the infrastructure to deliver this water to our public.
That has been the position of this commission and previous commissions.
Right.
That, that is a priority.
Right. And I think one of the things that we did a few years ago was to approve the addition of generators out, I guess, in the sewer, in the wastewater system, so that if there was a mass power outage, those generators would kick in, and we still would be pumping the wastewater.
Well, both
So, it wouldn't back up.
Both water and wastewater. We've got approximately 32 generators of varying size. The raw water intake, both our water treatment facilities and intakes have generators, and we run on those occasionally due to a few power issues. An example of that was during Helene, we had a major sewer lift station that was out on Boone, near Boone Lake. And we did not lose any product, as we say, to the lake. That generator ran for almost 72 hours. Otherwise, we would have had a significant release of sewage into the lake. And that's obviously what we're trying to avoid.
And not all systems have that kind of redundancy in their system so that they continue to perform even during very tough times?
That's right. And the commission, this commission, previous commissions, we've tried to grow that number of gen sets. At one point in time years ago, we had a very few number. Again, we're gradually added up to, and I believe we're at 32 right now.
But that's the improvements that we, on an ongoing basis, make into our system. And I think we've got one of the best water sewer systems anywhere. So, thank you for you and all the, the employees in the water sewer division. Do a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. And Tom, I would just echo Commissioner Brock's. I know you, you give the commissions a lot of credit, and, and really, it's your department and your work and planning strategically over multiple years to get us where we are. And I mean, it shows, and I can't remember the recognition from TDEC, but, I mean, to have water quality at the level that we have for 50 consecutive years is a testament to your entire department.
We've got, you've got some good employees that work for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Mayor, item 7.2, ordinance 4912 dash 25, first reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 4663 dash 18 entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for Permits, Tapping Fees, and a Fair User Charge System of Billing for Use of the Johnson City, Tennessee Brush Creek, Nob Creek, and Regional Wastewater Systems, and all ordinances supplementary thereto and amendatory thereof by repealing ordinance 4663 dash 18 and enacting the following provisions in lieu and instead thereof."
Mr. Stel, good job on the reading, Steve. One thing I'll point out about what Steve just read, of course, this is the wastewater treatment and collection system ordinance, funding for capital improvements. Steve named three different treatment basins. As we've discussed in previous budget sessions, Johnson City has three wastewater treatment plants. If some of our surrounding cities of similar size have one wastewater treatment plant. So, I will tell you after a year or two here, we seem like we're always doing some type of work on one of the wastewater treatment plants, and that's, we actually are, but it's because we have three. This capital project funding on this side of the fence, on the wastewater side, involves six debt-funded projects totaling about $41 million. And again, with increases in rate-funded capital to continually effective, effectively perform reoccurring replacement of sewer lines, rehabilitation of sewer lines. So, these projects include major renovations to the Nob Creek wastewater plant, which has some electrical components, portions of the treatment plant were originally built in 1971, so they're over 50 years old, and they are in need of replacement to make sure that facility operates reliably. There are three large wastewater pumping stations, one in each basin that are either being replaced or rehabilitated, refurbished as a result of their age. And there is some internal pumping within the Brush Creek Plant, which you met down there in December for a ribbon cutting that, again, dates back to 1971. Both of these, if you group this entire plan together, I think it's worth knowing that once you start to see that you have a limitation or capacity issues, that is not an overnight fix. And as the board has mentioned, there's planning involved in that, and the delivery and planning together can be extensive. When we did the regional plant out near the Tri-Cities Airport, we started in 2004 and finished the plant in 2011. So, these are not wake up one morning and decide you're going to do something with the plant. There is a progression that we have to go through. We expect these projects, some of them will take as little as three years, some of them will in all likelihood take seven to eight years. So, I thought that might be of interest.
Approval is recommended also. Any comments or questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second. Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Willis?
Mayor, item 8.1, ordinance 4908 dash 25, second reading and public hearing. An ordinance to abandon all of the public right-of-way on Circle Court. Ms. Riley Pudney with Development Services is here to present.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, in the interest of the public hearing, I'll go ahead and provide a brief review of the request. But this is a complete abandonment request for Circle Court for future housing authority development and just kind of reappointing everything. The commission meeting is kind of off Eddie Williams Road, and Circle Court in the subject area is right in that red circle, so right off the road, close to us. There will be a 15-foot utility easement retained with the abandonment, and all departments' utilities had no issue with the full abandonment. And staff still recommends approval.
All right. I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 490825. Seeing nobody coming up, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the ordinance as written?
Second.
Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Mayor, item 8.2, ordinance 4909 dash 25, second reading and public hearing. An ordinance to revise and update the code of the City of Johnson City to revise the 2018 International Fire Prevention Code, Appendix D107.1, by amending Title VII, Chapters II of the Code of the City of Johnson City, or any other ordinances or parts of ordinance heretofore passed, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinance in conflict herewith.
Mr. Trivitt's not here.
So, so Mayor, in his absence, I'm happy to report there have been no changes since first reading. And Chief Bell is here with us this evening if you might have questions. I'm sure Chief Bell would be happy to answer those.
Chief Bell, appreciate it. If you don't mind, will you just plain-speak that code?
Yes. So, basically what this is, is taking an exception to the Appendix D. What it is right now, it is written that anything over 30 homes in a development would require a second entrance into that, so a second road into that. What this does, it changes to 50. And this matches up with other municipalities in the area, and we're trying to make it more developer-friendly for this because we do have a lot of parcels in the city that this would allow us to develop, or developers to actually take effect and develop those.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll move for approval.
Second. Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Mayor, item 9.1 is the presentation of unaudited financial statements by our Director of Finance, Ms. Stephanie Laus.
I was wondering where you were going.
She's leaving.
I mean, I'd much rather sit up there and do this, but
No, appreciate it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Willis. Stephanie Laus, I'm the Finance Director, and I'm going to present some financial information for the nine months that ended March 31st, 2025. They're a little bit different than what I've done in previous quarters just because we are further into the year. So, first, we're going to start with the general fund. Here's an overview of what the general fund looks like. We have revenues of about 95, $95.2 million for the year. Our expenses are coming in at 116, so that's $21 million in excess of the revenues. To give you a little more detail on the revenues, the year is about three-quarters of the way over, so we would expect most things to be at about 75% of the budget. You can see that our total revenue is at 81.2%, so we're doing well there as an overall. The highlights of these property taxes, we're at 95.5%. We collected 97.4% of our $43 million 24 tax assessment, and there's about 155 in penalties in there as well. That number has actually decreased a little bit by the other years. We've had a lot of Board of Equalization reassessments this year. We've had, for instance, Walmart and Sam's had their properties reassessed from 2017 all the way through 2023, which resulted in about 250,000 of tax refunds to those corporations. We're hoping those are going to slow down now, but we've seen a lot of them come through. Payment in lieu, we received our largest payment in lieu at the end of the, end of the fiscal year, so that will come up to be about 100% by the end of the fiscal. Other local taxes are 71.4, so a little under. The biggest one there is our sales tax, and I've got another slide to talk about sales tax in a little more detail. Occupancy is at 81.4. We had a huge month in October, which was due to Helene, so we had a lot of occupancy taxes come in that month.
Where is that?
That is also in other local taxes. We won't know the effects of the Big South Tournament until those March payments are due in April, they're due April 20th, so.
You're talking about lodging tax?
Yes, ma'am. So, we expect to see those come in. They're due the 20th of April, and then we'll be able to see what kind of increase the Big South Tournament had on that as well. Licenses and permits, mechanical plumbing and building permits are just, they are all exceeding their full-year budget already in March by at least 5%. Some of them as much as 15. Spoke with planning and development and permitting, and they said we have at least four major subdivisions that are going, being developed right now, and it's contributing a lot of those permits. Intergovernmental revenue, the state sales tax is right where it should be for the year. Everything else is going to come in right where we expect it. And then our other revenue miscellaneous down there, it's 210% to budget. That's where we have the $1.7 million sale of Buffalo.
So, on the fines and forfeitures, what was your comment on that?
So, those are just kind of, they're, they're, we're at the mercy of when people come in and pay those court fines and court fees. It's really only about 50% of budget right now, and I don't look for it to, to hit a full budget. So, this is talking about sales tax, and that's been the biggest one in our local sale, in our local taxes, and I know you guys are interested in that. So, you know, we're at 74. So, you know, we're at 74.3% of budget. There's a two-month delay, so we haven't got January and February in, or February, March in there yet, but we did do estimates for the purpose of reporting. I did leave them off of this graph, though. So as you can see, we spike in December, and then we tend to taper off in January and February, and then we recover just a little bit towards the last quarter of the month. These are the three, three, this year, last year, and the year before. The green is FY '25, the red is '24, and the blue is '23. So you can see, we actually had a decrease in sales tax in December from last year of about 5.5%, and that is not typical. We normally see that increase from, from December, from the holidays. We did see...
Year-over-year.
Year-over-year. We did see in January that they did come up a little bit from the prior year, about 1.4%, but July through November, we were seeing a 4% growth from the prior year, and for that to drop to 1.4 in January, I don't know that we're going to get back to that 4%. So we had previously been expecting sales tax to come in at budget or above, about a million above. With this significant drop-off and looking at what we've collected in previous years in the last quarter, I expect us to come in at budget, but no more.
Do you think more people are, maybe during the Christmas time, I can't remember what the weather was like, but do more online ordering, and if they live out in the county, that sales tax goes out into the county and not into the city? If they came in and shopped here, it would come to us?
I think we're seeing a lot of that. I mean, you see Amazon vans all over the place every day, so that, that's going to have an effect on it. I also think Helene had an effect on that as well. I mean, I don't think things were, we didn't spend as much in the, in the holidays.
Right.
So when we get to expenditures, we're, we've expended about $116 million of the year, this year. We're at 95% of our budget. A lot of that is due to the settlement, the 27. We did have to record the entire $27 million as an expense in February when it was settled. We have paid out about $21 million, and then the remainder is an accrual in payables. So we have already recognized that entire amount. Other than that, we, everybody is really tightening their belts and saving money. They're really trying to reduce their budgets this year and to the end of the year and then into next year. So everybody else, all the departments are about 70% to budget, so the department, the departmental expenses are coming in where they should be. And then this is our fund balance. We haven't historically shown this when I've done the quarterlies because of the way that we budget, and it would show an uneven decrease in the beginning of the year, but now that we've gotten three-quarters of the way through, I wanted to show it, share this with you guys. Our fund balance right now as of March 31st is $33.9 million. That's a decrease of $21 million from June 2024. It's made up of non-spendable, which is inventory of about $168,000. Our restricted fund balance policy, which requires us to keep two months of expenditures in a restricted fund balance, is at 18.3. Other restricted, which is for senior citizens and law enforcement, those types of grants, is at 1.3. Committed for economic development tourism is 9.1. Assigned, which is compensated absences, and it's a GASB regulation, is 4.9. But we do not have any taken unassigned at this time. In our, our restricted fund balance policy, we're about 1.5 short in what we need to have in there. So that's where tightening the belt and getting, and saving those expenses is really coming in, and the directors are really trying to, to help out with that. Enterprise funds, water and sewer, the revenue remains slightly ahead of budget. They, expenditures are slightly below, other than with building materials and supplies, and I talked with Tom and his team, and it seems we've gotten some more material agreements that we had not anticipated for this year, so that's why that's driven that cost up, and also the escalated cost of the actual materials. But overall, their change in net position is right now at 2.5 million, which is a million ahead of budget. And that's that money that Tom was talking about, that we use to fund all that capital to, to keep our, our facilities in good running condition. The other enterprise funds, regional solid waste, city solid waste, and stormwater are all right where they're supposed to be for budget. They're all coming in at better than budget. Regional solid waste was budgeted to have an increase of about $32,000 for the year, and right now they're setting at 207. City solid waste was budgeted to have a decrease of 200, of 314,000, and they're sitting at 280. And then stormwater was supposed to get out 817, and they've got 951. And then lastly, Freedom Hall, it's the same story that I've been telling you guys every quarter this year. Helene really hit them. There are 710,000 under, expenditures in excess of revenues right now. Their revenues are about 20% behind where the year-to-date should have them, but Helene made them lose half of one of their big moneymakers. They lost an entire sold-out show, and then they had an event canceled because of Helene. Expenditures are about 11% above where they should be year-to-date budget. I think a lot of that is due to doing some in-house work for the Big South Tournament that was originally planned to not be in-house. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
Just thank you. I love the way you organize this and, you know, get up and inform us and the public as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Laues.
Thank you.
Mr. Willis?
Mayor, that concludes your business.
All right. I'll start to my left, and Commissioner Brock, any comments?
Just as follow-up on the Big South, we have this next week, Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting next Wednesday, and so we'll get all the final, I think, numbers on that. But, you know, at first blush, it was a tremendous success. We had, I think, Commissioner Fowler, was it about 70-some thousand room nights?
Yeah.
That were booked here in Johnson City, which is great for our hoteliers. And then some of them had to go to Kingsport as well, because we just didn't have total enough rooms to house everybody. So we'll come back with a report on that at our next meeting and kind of show the results of a high-level tournament like that. So it was a very good thing, so. And happy Easter, everyone.
Absolutely. Commissioner Fowler?
The AAC Track Meet Outdoor started today. Milligan's hosting it, but the City of Johnson City is actually the host, and that should be a big thing for all the schools coming from that AAC conference that Milligan's in, and it goes through Saturday if you want to see some good track events and field events. So that's going on, and just have a happy Easter this weekend.
Great. Vice Mayor?
Not today. Happy Easter.
All right. Well, we will adjourn this meeting.